To East Hampton Town Board, we are live.
Thank you, LTV. Good morning and welcome everyone to the East Hampton Town Board Work Session of Tuesday, April 8th, 2025. Carol, if you could please read the roll call.
Councilmember Flight.
Present.
Councilmember Lees, Councilmember Rogers.
Present.
Councilmember Call to Piedmont.
Present.
Supervisor Barconsales.
Present. And let me just say, Councilmember Lees will be joining us later. He had to go to the Suffolk County Legislature this morning in Riverhead. Now, if we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and I salute the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so today we start our meeting with the public portion. We ask you to kindly keep your comments to three minutes, and we'll do folks in the room, and then we'll go to folks that have called in. And then we have four topics today. First, we're going to hear the Water Quality Technical Advisory, Request for Applications for 2025 Round One, the Grant Recommendations, and that'll be presented by Billy Hayjack. Then we'll have a presentation on the Personal Wireless Service Facilities Fee Changes. That's a recommendation from Tina Lagaren. Then the Lake Montauk Stormwater Abatement Project Designs, and that will be with Tom Schaefer, our outside consultant. And then lastly, we have the Proposed Amendment to Chapter 255 Zoning, Definition of Community Resource, with our town attorney, Rob Connolly. That'll be followed by Liaison Reports and Resolutions. So first, we'll start with public portion. Carol, has anybody signed up to speak?
No, I think David's on the line.
Oh, is David on the line?
Let me go just double check on that. I don't see him on my Zoom, but give me a second. He's on Zoom.
On the phone.
Oh, wait, yeah, I got him. Yep, I got him. Yep. David Lees. Hey, good morning.
David, are you there?
I am. Good morning, everyone.
Okay, great. Terrific. All right, so we're up to public portion. Carol, no one has signed up over there. Is there anyone in the room that would like to address the board during public portion? No? Okay. Jason, is there anyone on the line?
Yes, we.
Just got cut off.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, no. I took my finger off the mute button while I was taking care of a few things. We have two callers on the line. I'm unmuting the first right now. My apologies.
Thank you.
All right, callers. Ending in. Oh, there you are.
Yes, am I live?
You are live, yes.
Okay. Carol Buddha calling from Springs. I'm calling in about the Springs Park test area that was recently cleared with the stated intention of eliminating invasive plants. I recently sent the board a proposal from Frank Petronini, a well-respected and well-known expert in reestablishing native habitats. He has said, what every horticulturist I've spoken to has said, that if you clear the area, you must revegetate, or you will simply get another invasive, in this case, highly invasive mugwort. Over the past 20 years, every year in the park that's been cleared in this manner has resulted in a field of mugwort, not a grassland matto. There is absolutely no reason, other than magical thinking, to believe that the outcome will be any different here. If this is truly a test area, then finish the job and revegetate. Planting must be done before the end of April to take before the hot, dry weather comes. Some people from the town have been touting that the habitat benefits of mugwort, and I want to correct that here with information from the Cornell Cooperative. Mugwort, while having some environmental benefits, like soil aeration and being a food source for some insects, is a highly invasive species displacing native plants and disrupting ecosystem. As to its environmental harms, mugwort's aggressive growth and extensive underground rhizome system allow it to outcompete native plants, leading to a decline in biodiversity. Mugwort can delay or disrupt the natural succession of an ecosystem, preventing the establishment of other plant species. Mugwort pollen can be a common cause of hay fever impacting human health, and it's also toxic for dogs. What we now have, unfortunately, at the park, is an unfinished project. The town has spent about $24,000 to have this area cleared, and that money will be wasted down the drain if the area isn't revegetated now. The mugwort that will fill the area will be difficult and costly to remove in the future. Frank Petronini's proposal would plant a native woodland filled with a variety of flowering trees and shrubs, the kind of native habitat our declining bird populations desperately need to thrive. The Springs Park is a rare opportunity to create such a habitat in an area fenced protected from deer. The test site could become a model of environmental protection. At the entrance to the park driveway is a very large sign with all your names on it. I think the question is, do you want your name on a sign to a mismanaged mistake or to a model property and park you can be proud of? I urge the board to raise this issue as new business today because you've created a problem in the park that needs to be addressed immediately, so our taxpayer dollars will not have been wasted. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Jason, please put the next caller through.
Absolutely. Caller ending nine, three, three, eight. Hey, you're on the air.
Okay, thank you. This is Melissa Bizar from Amagansett. I am an active, active user of the Springs Dog Park, and I want to add my support to all the comments made by the prior speaker. I agree wholeheartedly with it. But as an individual, what I grapple with is that the logic of the clearing taking place and then no plan for replanting. As a homeowner, I, when I've had to revegetate areas, the town is very clear to me that plantings need to take place, large trees spaced a certain distance apart, lower shrubs put in. There's a logical, well-thought-out plan that homeowners need to comply with to do the right thing in terms of revegetation. I fail to understand why the town is not doing the same thing with this clearing that homeowners are required to do. I'm not allowed to just cut, clear-cut an area and wait to let nature take over. I do plantings. That is why I agree completely with the statements that Carol just made. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Jason, has anyone else called in?
We have no other callers on the line.
Okay, so, one more time, anyone here like to address the board? All right, so we're going to move on to our topics. And the first topic is the Water Quality Technical Advisory Committee's 2025 Round One Grant Recommendations. Welcome, Billy.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Good morning, Supervisor, members of the Town Board. I'm Billy Hayjack. I'm representing the Water Quality Technical Advisory Committee, and we're offering our Round One Recommendations for the, for grant funding, for projects. And they'll just have to bear with me. Melissa couldn't be here today, and she's the brains of the operation. And we usually take turns going through these items, so it'll, it's, just bear with me here. So, the next slide is, so for our Round One Recommendations, we had, the due date was February 17th. The, all of the applications that were received were vetted by town staff, the committee, and we came up with eight projects that we feel are worthy of funding and two projects that we are recommending for not, not funding, or not supporting funding on. The next slide, please. So this is just a list of all 10 projects that were received. The first eight there are the projects that we're recommending, and the last two are the projects where there's recommendation or no recommendation for funding. And I can get right into the projects. The next slide, please. The, well, the funding tiers for wastewater projects, I'm not going to go through that right now, but that's essentially the ranking system that we use for developing the amount of funding that would be eligible for specific wastewater projects. If we need to refer, refer back to that slide, we can, we can come back to it. If there are any questions about the amount of funding that's being divvied up to certain projects. So the first project is a multifamily home. It's a two-family home that's located on North Main Street. It's within the town, but it's right on the outskirts of the Village of East Hampton. It's a two-family home, five bedrooms. So it's eligible for multifamily residential funding, and we've normalized it based on the single-family residence rebate program. This project scored a 69 out of 100. The request was for a little over $80,000, and based on the equivalent flow for a single family, the committee recommended the eligible cost be about $20,000, $20,500. And again, this is a conventional septic system. They're proposing to upgrade to an innovative alternative septic system. The next slide shows the site plan. That's the existing two-family residence, the parking area, and the proposed septic system. This area, it's not in the, it's not in a critical area. However, it is, there is a very shallow depth of groundwater here, and it is the headwaters of the Nature Trail and Hook Pond, so it is a good area for septic upgrade. And again, the request for funding is to a little over $20,000. Are there any questions about this one?
Yeah, I just, when you put in 151 North Main Street, East Hampton, into map search, it kind of brings up a few different areas. Can we just clarify exactly the location of this one?
Sure. It's on, it would be, I guess, the western side of North Main Street, and I believe it's near the intersection of Springs Fireplace Road intersection with North Main Street.
Okay.
And Three Mile Harbor, like that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you can see, it looks, Tom, that it's south of Miller Terrace.
I have a question. Are you done?
You can keep going. Go ahead, Kay.
Yeah, mine's just clerical. On the septic calculations over the chart, over on the side, it says existing density, and that's a third from the bottom. Town of Southampton, certificate of occupancy. I'm sure that's some kind of typo.
Is that on the, oh, on the site plan?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that, I mean, that's the site plan that's prepared by the, by the applicant, so I'm assuming that's just a typo.
Okay.
I mean, we, we know it is a, it's a two-family residence.
Well, it just says Town of Southampton.
Yeah.
I, they just need to correct.
Okay, good catch. Any other questions? No. Okay, we can move along to the, the second project is another septic system upgrade, and it's the Nappy Campy Club. This is a much bigger project in terms of flow and improvements. So it's 39 existing trailers or, you know, residential units. Their existing flow is, based on the county standards, is 8,250 gallons per day. The new system is, was designed based on, you know, a best fit. So I guess they looked at their water usage, their water bills, and they're going to design the system based on the water that they're actually using versus what the county health department determines for the design criteria. So they're removing 25 cesspools, again, installing multiple unit system. It's essentially the, almost like a mini sewer system is what they're installing. It's, it's pretty elaborate. This ranked very highly. It was scored 93 out of 100. It's in a very critical area. It's in the two-year travel time. It's surrounded by wetlands. It's a very shallow depth of groundwater. You know, we think overall this is a really good project. The request was for $825,000. Its eligible funding is $375,000, which was the maximum amount that could be allocated to the project, and the committee recommended the full funding of $375,000 for the system. Are there any specific questions about this one? There's a site plan there and an aerial photograph to show the area's location and its proximity to Nappy Harbor and surface waters.
Sure, those septics aren't new.
No, I think they're all cesspools. I don't believe there's any actual treatment tank. So.
Yeah.
I do have a question, which is, I understand the logic behind, you know, designing it based on the actual flow, especially with the, a new system that requires, you know, biology. The health department is good with that, because?
As far as we know, yeah. I mean, I think the, I don't think the engineer, I believe the engineer for this was Drew Bennett, and I would imagine that Drew's had multiple conversations with the county before actually getting into this level of detail for designing the system. Thank you. Any further questions?
Yeah.
Okay, we go to the next project is a commercial septic upgrade. It's DNR Realty Group, which is 28 Maidstone Park, the site. Most people probably know it operating as Rita Cantina. So it's a restaurant with a single-family residence. This is a retroactive project, so the septic system has already been installed. The applicant is requesting funding for the retroactive installation. And again, this is an area, it's a target area. It's the zero-to-two-year travel time to surface waters. And the project scored an 85 of 100. The requested, the ask was for $200,000. Their eligible funding is $70,038, and the committee is recommending the full award of $70,038 for the septic system upgrade. The next slide has.
Sorry, I have one question on this one while we're here. As you're making the recommendation, are you taking factors like compliance with site plan, et cetera, into account when you're making that recommendation?
So the, yes, yes and yes. However, certain, if there are violations that are brought to our attend, the committee's attention, that have no bearing on the sanitary system, the occupancy of the building, then, you know, our objective is a water quality improvement. So we're going to recommend, you know, if it's a good project, we're going to recommend, you know, make a recommendation to support it.
This project's already in, correct? So this would just be giving the tenant money?
That's.
Yeah. From what I understand, because I reached out on this one too, that they were before the ARB, and they got their approval a few weeks ago. They submitted a building permit, and we're, they're waiting on planning board and fire marshal sign-off. So, and then we're, they'll be able to, the building department will be able to give them, let them know what their fee is, so that it could all be brought up. And I guess there were violations there, and I think that would then clear it up. So what we could do, and I think we may have done this in the past, is if we desire, we could take this to public hearing, but it's got the caveat that, you know, all of their, that they have a building permit and, you know, everything is in place.
Yeah, I think that, that's kind of what I'm getting at, which is that, by all means, the water quality piece, I think, is 100% there, but I think in terms of awarding this, like ensuring that the tenant or occupier is addressing the violations is critical for me.
Yeah, I thought, just to agree with Tom, I thought that in order to be eligible for grants, you had to be in compliance of all town codes. So that, that's my understanding of how this works. So they already put it in, the septic.
The septic system is already installed, yes.
So that was without the benefit of a building permit? Or they got one for that?
No, I would have to check. I'm, I would, I don't know. I believe they got obtained a building permit for the septic upgrade, though.
Thanks.
Yeah. Yes, they did, right.
I'm pretty sure they did have a building permit for that, and I agree with everybody else that it should be contingent. They've had a site plan out there for a long time. I know there have been some legal matters around, but I agree with Tom and the other board members that they should finalize that in order to get the funding.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, Billy.
Sure. Was there a site plan? So we can skip to the next slide. This is, I think we're on number five. This is, the Village of Sag Harbor has requested additional funding. This is their ongoing sewer shed expansion. This is Sewer Shed L, and this would be connecting the engineering design work associated with connecting the Sag Harbor schools into their sewer system. And, you know, there's been a number of projects before the, the committee and the board has awarded a number of projects to Sag Harbor for their expansion and their sewer system. My understanding is that work is expected to break ground in September is what, you know, I've been led to believe. So it is actually getting a shovel in the ground. This would add the schools to that project, which makes a lot of sense based on the amount of flow. We know that schools tend to be very high ammonia concentrations, and we just think it's a really good public benefit. It scored very highly. It was a 90 out of 100. The request is $31,900 for the engineering component, and we'd recommended awarding the full $31,900 for this project. And we have a, there's a map there that just shows the location of the sewer treatment facility and the location of the schools. I'm good with this. Any questions?
No, I think we're good on that one.
Okay, great. The next project is the South Fork Sea Farmers. This is their group that does oyster reefs, reef building projects. This is a request for equipment. They'd like to purchase a shell washer, conveyor, and tumbler, I believe is what it's called. It allows them, it's going to give them the capacity to scale up their operation. The, it's a piece of equipment that'll be stored at the town's aquaculture facility, and they'll, they are going to allow, the town is going to be a partner and be able to use the system, so there'll be some cooperative benefit to it. They've completed some really good projects. They do a lot of education work. It's a lot of hands-on work with school groups. And it scored very highly. It was a 93 out of 100. The request was for $50. The committee.
$50,000.
$50,000. Did I say 50?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. $50,000.
I could write that joke, right?
The award, the recommended award is $46,000. And if there are any questions, I'll, can try to answer them, but I can, I'm not an expert at aquaculture, so.
Just quick one on this one. It sounds like it would assume that, like, our aquaculture department is fully supportive of this.
Yes.
Initiative, number one. And, you know, while the aquaculture department is able to use it, are any other nonprofit organizations able to use this, or would it just be restricted for this organization and the aquaculture department? Do we know that?
I don't know. I, I would imagine it's going to be just the, the owners of the equipment and the aquaculture department, but we can find out.
And will they then be fully responsible for maintenance and repair of said equipment? Or will the town have some liability for that, too, would be another question?
Okay, we can find out before you schedule your hearing. Any other questions? Okay. And I think we're on, we have two more, I think. So this is another commercial septic system upgrade. It's the Springs, Springs General Store. And again, it's a, removing a conventional system, installing an IA system. It's located in a target area. It's the zero, obviously, everyone knows where the Springs General Stores, but it's the zero-to-two-year travel time to Akabana Harbor. There have been a lot of cooperative efforts in the area to improve water quality, both surface and groundwater. And this project scored an 87 out of 100. The request was $131,567, and the request came in at what was eligible for full funding, and the committee is recommending the full funding of $131,567. Not a whole lot to this one, if there's a, this is a site plan there and an aerial photograph. Again, I, so, sure, might be inquiring. My understanding is that this has been through site plan review, and I believe they're at the end of their, the process for obtaining site plan for the, for the project.
Just, I mean, just an educational question, which is, like, I don't see the total score on this, at 87 is lower than some of the other ones in the 90. What were some of the factors that kind of scored this lower relatively to other projects that we have?
Flow, location, proximity to surface waters. I will just say one thing on that. I recall the, the site plan review for this, and I think that there was a potential for them to try to avoid putting this in, and so I just want to say that it's a very good thing that they're proposing this, and I'm happy to support the funding.
Yes.
There's, there's always a thing that people do, try to avoid, you know, doing, it's a big project, and so I think it's a real positive that this is for us.
Particularly because of the location and the impact that it has on Akabana Harbor.
And. We have, our next project is also a septic system upgrade or multiple upgrades. It's the Treescape at East Hampton Condominiums, and it's installing two new systems servicing three condominium buildings. The total flow, it's a high-flow project. It's over 3,000, 3,600 gallons per day. It's a large reduction in nitrogen. It's in the two-to-10-year travel time to Three Mile Harbor and head of the harbor, which is a priority area. And this ranked high for the committee. This was a 92 out of a 100. And the request was $438,000. The eligible amount, that's, you know, the eligible dollar amount is $327,000, and the committee is recommending the full eligible amount. There's an aerial photograph, I believe, and a cop, a portion of the site plan. I have to be completely honest, I didn't know that this condominium project existed in this area with this density.
Oh, yeah, the density.
How many properties total will benefit from this system?
How many units?
Yes.
Or property?
Units, sorry.
Units. It is. It's three buildings. Let me see if, I do not know.
There's more than three, I think, on that property.
Yeah, but there's, for some reason, that, I, I mean, I think they're all managed.
I think it's home ownership, isn't it?
Yeah, but they, these are the only two areas that they're proposing the upgrade. I mean, if, it would be great if more properties would, you know, more of the units would, but I'm, I'm assuming that it's, the owners of the individual units are going to be paying the freight of this, you know, the rest of the freight of it. But in terms of the number of actual units, I'd have to get back to you on this.
May I just ask about a bullet point three on the project proposal? Total flow for each parcel is 3,600, but total flow for the project is 900. Is that reversed?
Yeah, I think the total flow is 3,600 gallons.
For the project?
Yes.
I think so, too, yeah.
Yep. Number of units. Any further questions on this one?
No.
Thank you. And then the last project is a habitat restoration project. This is in Hog Creek, and this is a shoreline restoration, shoreline improvement project with the benefit of added carbon. They're putting a carbon layer, which is essentially like a PRV, into the, into this, into the proposal. So this is an area where it's a somewhat eroded shoreline. There's very little to no vegetation, and the project is to put in carbon layer, which is essentially wood chips, core logs, and revegetation. And I can't speak to the, you know, the hydrology of it, but there's, I draw, there's a, the discharge of groundwater is at the surface here. It's a very high discharge of groundwater. So the theory is that the carbon layer that's close to the surface is going to capture and filter the groundwater before it's discharged into, into Hog Creek. So there's a expected nitrogen reduction. We think it's a fairly cost-effective project, and it scored 87 out of 100 on the ranking sheet. The, the request was $91,328, and we're recommending the full amount be awarded.
And is the shoreline on private property? And is the shoreline on private property?
It's some, most of it is going to be actually trust, we think most of it's going to be trustee land.
Okay. I think, what did David say? I'm sorry.
The trustees, the trustees have the bottom lands, the upland is CPF purchased properties in the past.
Thank you.
Just, just one thing on this. Do we have any data on the existing work and water conditions? So, I mean, just go forward to approve this project. We actually have something to measure the benefits of the project against in the future? Because I know this is somewhat of a novel approach to, you know, how we're treating water quality. So i- is there any data on the existing water quality out there or not?
I would defer to the natural resources department, but I'm sure there's lots of data.
Kim shaking her head. You want to come up, please?
Hello, Kim Shaw from Natural Resources. So we retained Clear to do a whole shoreline evaluation. And they have a Trident probe, which they have patented on, that they did the whole, and they characterize this whole entire watershed. And they, um, this is like a hotspot in Hog Creek where we have a tremendous amount of groundwater flow through that area. So it's not, the nitrogen is not that high, but it's the groundwater flow, so it equals out. So you're getting a tremendous amount of flow that's going to be treated. So we've got other sites around Hog Creek, Three Mile Harbor in Georgia that we've done the same study. And then we come up with recommendations for treatment. And so this is the one that came in here. And it's passive. It's really not that expensive. We were actually going to split this project between Georgia and Hog Creek. But the committee felt that Hog Creek was a better fit. The shoreline was better. It needed some enhancement with vegetation. So the committee recommended an expansion in the Hog Creek watershed.
Yeah, and this, these living shorelines, they've been done other places and in town as well that are, I know the permeable barrier on Tambor Creek is monitored and we've done, Pussies Pond's had a, Pussies Pond had the same type of restoration project.
This is just a little bit less labor intense than doing a full PRB. And that's why we're calling it a shoreline stabilization and a habitat improvement project.
So if we go forward with the public hearing, could this just, could it be more specific where the parcel is? Because it's, it's vague, you know, when it says Hog Creek. David just mentions it's a CPF parcel, you know, property. What's the tax map number? What's the, what's the address so that we could have, you know, like called it up on our, on, on the GIS? That would be helpful.
It's right at the headquarters of Hog Creek as you're doing, coming around that bend there. Where you get into the community.
Definitely impaired there.
And there was a residence on the property, was torn down. There was an old dock. So there's remnants, I believe, of the docks still on a portion of the shoreline that we were going to rehabilitate.
So just to clarify, so, so the existing data we have says it's not a high nitrogen level at this point?
But it's the flow.
It's the flow. So the calculation of the expected TN reduction of a hundred and forty-four pounds a year, that's based on the flow?
Yes.
Okay.
And the other comment I, I'd just like to make, it's just overall to Tom's point. Maybe in future presentations, we include the, the grading system. So that folks, you know, the points that are given for, you know, for the applications. So that we understand where eighty-sevens and ninety-threes kind of come from.
Okay.
That'd be helpful. Thanks, Billy. Are there, so we're at the point where the, the board needs to decide, you know, do we want to take the water quality technical advisory committee's recommendation and go to public hearing on all of these projects? Tom?
Not all, but most. Obviously, I, I need to hear more back about the DNR family realty property as to like where their compliance is at. I, I, I would like to understand a bit more about the Hog Creek thing, but that's something I can work with Kim in your department on, just to kind of understand those numbers of what we're expecting to see and how. And then on the Treescape, I'd just like to know how many buildings were actually, sorry, how many units we're talking about that will be served by that number, because it's kind of a, it's a high number. So I want to make sure we've got a lot of units. Other than that, I am supportive of the recommended goals.
Yeah, I'm supportive on going to public hearing on all of them. I'm actually happy to see this many projects. I think in, in past rounds, there haven't been as many projects, you know, for the funding that was available. So I think it's positive that people are coming to us with requests. And I'm certainly in favor of going to public hearing. I, I understand some of the concerns or questions about projects. But I think we'll learn more at the public hearing and then can decide. But I'm supportive of this time.
Yeah, I, I'm, I agree with you. I, I think it's great to see there's many projects come through. I would, as far as any of the projects that we do whatsoever, I know that we need to make sure that it's written into the language that they must be code compliant to receive the grants as we've done in the past. And I look forward to going to public hearing. We, we go to public hearing separately on each one, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so that, I would definitely go to public hearing on them.
So I think what might be helpful, Billy and Kim, is that maybe at our next session on April fifteenth, oh, David, I'm sorry, David.
Yeah, sorry, Madam Supervisor.
Out of sight, out of mind.
I appreciate Madam Supervisor. No, no worries. I appreciate you allowing me to do the meeting remotely as I try to get back. Two comments. I agree with everyone. Nice. It's great, good to see this many well-deserving projects come in. Two of the projects I have comments on, I'm, I, I will support going to public hearing for all the projects. I'm, I'm apprehensive about funding projects that have already been installed. That is something that I'd have to maybe hear from the public more, do a little bit more research on. So that's one of them. The other, the second one is the one for the Nappeak Camping Club. Camping Club, I believe, yes. This program is an incentivization program, financial incentivization program to actually try to make meaningful reduction in nitrogen inputs into our bays, groundwater and such. That location of Nappeak is always known as one of the jewels of the Pecanic. This location right now with the amount of units that are on it and historical use of those units. And I believe that there might even be covenants or restrictions that they have to be passed down to family members or, or such first. It's a unique location. I would be interested in even potentially accepting the recommendations based on the scoring, but knowing that it's a recommending committee to potentially look at offering more money to this project as, as a greater amount of incentivization to see, potentially see the project move ahead. Knowing that I believe that the organization is going to have to bond for it. But I believe it's a, it's a very well-deserving project and the overall goal and water quality in, in that area is needed. That's my, my two discussion points. Thank you.
Thanks, David. So I'm supportive of going to public hearing, but I think what might, would might make sense. Because Tom has some outstanding questions. David's questioning the, the amount for the award for the Nappeak Camping Club. Maybe we have you folks come back next week, next Tuesday, to our April fifteenth work session and just answer Tom's questions and we can have a discussion about the award for the camping club. And, because we can't notice it till the seventeenth anyway. So that'll give us an opportunity to, you know, close the loop on that.
And if we could just find out also if that septic at, at Maidstone was put in with the building permit?
Thank you, Billy, and thank you, Kim.
Thank you, Billy. Thanks, thanks very much. Appreciate your time.
So now we have Tina Lagerin, and for the personal wireless services facilities, fee changes. That's a mouthful, Tina. Welcome.
Thank you, Supervisor. Hello, Town Board members. Thanks for having me. Unfortunately, I have to say, personal wireless service facility multiple times throughout the presentation, so please bear with me.
PWF.
What's that?
PWF, just.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll mess that up as well. So this presentation today is to propose changes to the fee schedule for the PWSF facilities. So on the next slide, you will see what I'm here to talk about specifically. The fee schedule was adopted in January of twenty twenty-three, most recently. And we do have some updates proposed. As with the entirety of the wireless issues, these are closely regulated by the Federal Communications Commission or FCC. FCC regulations govern telecommunications and how we regulate and charge them for applications are in large part guided and must be consistent with the framework of what FCC permits. The FCC document that relates to what we are allowed to charge for the applications I'm talking about today is called the FCC Third Report and Order, and it was issued in September twenty eighteen. Currently, we are undercharging for two of the fee types of personal wireless facilities that we issue permits for. The first is for facilities in our tier one category of applications. These are small wireless facilities on existing replacement or new utility poles inside the town streets right of way. Currently, we charge the same fee irrespective of whether the wireless equipment goes on an existing pole or requires the construction of a new or replacement pole. However, the review that we have to conduct is quite different in those two scenarios. The review associated with a new or replacement pole requires considerations of aesthetics, design, and also for newer poles, placement and setbacks from different structures and other criteria in our code. It's a more complicated process than just looking at the small bit of equipment that goes on the poles, yet we're charging the same. And FCC allows us to charge more. The second category that we're charging, that we're not charging for at all actually, is that the FCC allows us to charge a right-of-way fee just for the placement of the pole in the town's right-of-way and to have that be recurring for the life of the facility. It's in our town code that we intended to charge for that. However, it was never input into the adopted fee schedule, and so we're currently not collecting that revenue source. And I, I think it's important to do that. I mean, even with the fees that we're charging, I think it's challenging for us to recoup the costs that are associated with managing the PWSF program. And we are providing space for these facilities in our right-of-way. And they are gaining from that location. So on the next slide, you'll see the comparison of what is existing and proposed. So on the left is the existing facility application types and corresponding fees. And on the right is the proposed change. The first change I spoke about is for the tier one facilities. It's the top two rolls, rows, pardon me. We are proposing to create a tier one B. So right now, we just have a tier one, which is all small wireless facilities in the right-of-way. We're proposing to create the tier one B facility, which would just be new or replacement poles. And then the tier one A would be the co-locations on existing poles. As you can see, the co-location fee is rather small. It's five hundred for a single application proposing up to five installations and then just one hundred for each additional installation. But with the proposed change and what, what FCC allows us to do, we're allowed to charge one thousand for newer replacement poles. We do have outside consultants who review these for us. So I think, you know, this fee change is definitely more commensurate with what we're expected to pay our team. And then the last, the last row shows the right-of-way access fee, which is only two hundred and seventy dollars a year per pole. And there's no change to the tier two or tier three facilities. Pretty minor, really edits. If the board was amenable to this, we would suggest a code change that's rather small just to be sure that the definitions in our code match what would be on our form and on our fee schedule. So we would just create the tiered structure for tier one, where there's only one type, there would be two.
Tina, can I just ask, in that last fee change where we're proposing a road, a right-of-way access fee of two seventy a year? Is that, is that also determined by FCC?
Yes.
Regulations?
Yes, that's all they allowed us to charge.
And is that the one you said that it's already mentioned in the code?
Yes.
So we could theoretically, at our next board meeting, do a resolution? Like, and adopt that fee schedule?
Yes. My understanding is that the fee schedules are adopted by resolution. I don't think they really appear in code, like the numbers don't. It's just interesting that the wireless facilities code actually mentions that we're going to be collecting this right-of-way fee, but it's not in the fee schedule. So we haven't officially authorized you to collect.
We should amend the fees. We could do that.
Yeah.
So just, just on your code change in two fifty-five, one forty, uh, one forty-one E, one, tier one, there's no change. That, the two, the, the A and B already exist in the code. Is that correct?
There's a, no, so the, in this slide, the bold and underline shows, then if you could just go to the next one, the bold and underline text is what's changing. So right now, there's only one type of tier one. There's a tier two A and B, but there's no tier one A and B. So the new text is the A and B that you see there.
So Tina's making two recommendations. One requires a code change to do the one A, one B. The other, the right-of-way fee doesn't require a code change. And we can make that change. We could amend the fee schedule immediately.
Just a quick question. So you said that the review work for this is done by an outside agency. We kind of drag that. Do we have an estimate of what town is currently paying for these reviews to that outside consultant and how this proposed fee schedule will line up against that theoretically?
Yeah, we, we do. Even though, even if they charged us more, we wouldn't be able to recoup the costs because the FCC doesn't permit it, but they do charge us less than what we're charging, what we would charge here if we changed the fee in accordance with this proposal.
Our, our, so consultant is Citiescape? They're the ones that helped advise us on the wireless master plan and the revamping of the entire wireless code over the last couple of years.
Yeah, they, they have a significant technical expertise with respect to the equipment and how it must be placed on the pole in order to serve its purpose. The town planning department also has to review other aspects of our code, the design aesthetics, the avoidance areas that we have in our code, the setbacks. That's not really within Citiescape's expertise, so we maintain that in-house. So even though they're charging us a little bit less than what we're charging, the department is still putting in effort that we have to put in in order to adhere to our code.
Thank you.
I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but I can share you the contract. So you could have those if you'd like to see them.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Don't want to misquote it.
So just on timing of when we could start charging the fees, and probably it's a question for Rob. If we don't have that, a definition of like a tier one B in the code where we can charge, can we do the fee schedule before we change the code?
Yeah, oh, well, you want to do the.
Code change first.
Code change first, and then you do the resolution to collect the fees.
Yeah, that's, I just want to clarify.
I think one, one thing, and I, I know you and I emailed this a few months back, and it's just like educating the public on what is the process? Like if a pole's gone up in your neighborhood with facilities on, you know, when might a member of the public have visibility to that process taking place? Just to have their input heard, if nothing else. If you could just advise on that a little bit, that'd be really helpful.
Sure. So there's a tiered permit process, right? Tier ones are in the right-of-way. Tier two are co-locations on existing structures that are not in the right-of-way. And tier three are the large pole, like the towers, right? The big, major regional, like transmission facilities. For tier one and tier two, there isn't really a lot of public outreach. The federal regulations, again, require very quick processing of the tier one and two applications. I don't know the timeframes off the top of my head, but it's sixty days for, I'm giving examples. It's like sixty days for placement on an existing structure, ninety days for a new structure. And in those, in that amount of time, the department both has to consider whether or not the application is complete. And then when, when it's complete, you know, does it achieve the technical merits it's supposed to based on the regulations and our code? It is an administrative permit process for those reasons. For the tier one and tier two, because we have such a short amount of time. They used to go through the planning board, but with the wireless master plan adoption in twenty twenty-four, it became an administrative procedure that is now delegated to the planning department. So we process those independently. What I'll say is that for large program installations and, you know, the wireless master plan code went into effect twenty twenty-four, we haven't had a significant amount of applications since that time to process under the new framework. We are about to see some increase in activity now that the, you know, presence of the plan has made itself known to the providers. And for big programs, we are going to, even when they only include tier one and tier two, we're going to be asking them to come and present to the town board or the planning board to provide that public outreach and awareness.
Right.
Right? So we do have, and that's going to be actually something I'm asking the board to see soon. Crown Castle, who's like a provider who builds utility infrastructure for wireless providers to side on, they've got a, a big program that they'd like to propose. So they're going to be before you in a couple of weeks asking for the board to just understand what they're doing and, and hear some feedback.
Yeah, it would be great to see, get a visual on what we're talking about when we're talking about in those tier ones that fit on the top of existing or new. about those Tier Ones that fit on the top of existing or new poles. And also, this, and I, and this was one of the, the things we spoke about when we were designing that, that code with their consultancy, was that we have no jurisdiction, if it's a state right-of-way, county right-of-way. This only applies to town right-of-ways.
That's correct. Yes, we don't get involved at all if it's a state, county.
So if it's on the Nappick stretch, there's nothing to do with this. Which I believe, if I recall, the Crown Castle had a contract with New York State, and that's why many of us now have service on the Nappick stretch, is because they co-located on the poles. So you can see them as you drive by across the stretch?
Yeah.
What they look like. But it would be great for the, for the public to also know, when we're talking about a Tier One, what's the size of that that's going to go up on a pole?
Yes. And, and we will have visuals and things like that. It is, it is hard to like just hear with, with the words I'm saying, certainly. The last thing, just to finish answering Tom's question, the Tier Three facilities, those bigger installations, those still do go through the site plan process. So those are reviewed in a public forum in the planning board work sessions, and then the planning board does have a public hearing on those because they're treated as a site plan special permit.
If you don't mind me adding in one moment to Tina's comments there, the, the small cell technology that the tech Kate was discussing, where they look like a keg on top of a, on top of a telephone pole, that's being widely used in many places in Montauk, even in Amegansett. The location that, one of the Tier Three by the town stand there did go in, that did not have to go through review, was in Hither Hills State Park. That was actually, and they requested comments from the town's planning board, but since they're on their own jurisdiction on there, that didn't have to go through a full site plan. That's one of the only ones that have gone in recently, that didn't go through a full site plan.
And, and the last thing I'll just mention generally is that it does seem the industry's looking at the wireless master plan and paying attention to it because the applications we're seeing are in areas that don't have coverage.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So it is having the intended effect of targeting the areas of town that need this service and, and having providers, you know, pay attention to it. So I think that is good.
Great.
Just to close up on the last slide, and I think we already talked about this, you know, if the, if the town board's amenable to the change, we do need to just refer the code change to the planning board. It's our assertion this would be a Type Two action in TICRA, so you wouldn't have to do an environmental analysis, and that the fee schedule can be changed by town board resolution per 255-926. So everybody's.
Thank you.
So, so everybody's good to maybe at the April 17th meeting, we have the amended fee schedule for the, in the right-of-way where we can collect that $270 per year. And then is everyone good with the code changes that Tina presented today?
Yeah.
And we could get that to the planning board?
Yeah.
And then once we get their comments back, we can notice it for public hearing.
Okay.
Just a reminder, I will not be here on the 17th.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Tina. Okay. So the next topic we have is the Lake Montauk Stormwater Abatement Project Designs. And Tom Schaefer, welcome. Kim, you going to do an introduction?
Yes.
Beautiful.
Hello again. I'm here today to introduce you to Tom Schaefer from DNB Engineering. He's going to be presenting the final designs for the Westlake Stormwater Abatement Project located at the Westlake Boat Launch off of Derriere Avenue. This project was part of a recommendation from the Lake Montauk Stormwater Plan that was actually one of my first projects when I landed in the town of East Hampton. So we picked up a bunch of these recommendations from the Lake Montauk Subwatershed Plan and incorporated them into the CPF Water Quality Plan. So these are pre-approved projects. Tom worked on a couple of different projects, but this is one of the priority projects that we are hopeful to go out to bid, maybe this summer, and do some other remediation. It's a pretty unique project. We coordinated with agriculture, Marine Patrol, and the guys at Land Management to make sure that we're doing the correct thing and the timing is right so that we're not doing construction at the boat ramp, you know, during the busy season. So we'll go out this summer, hopefully, and then a late fall, winterish sort of installation. So, Tom?
Thank you. Welcome, Tom.
Thanks, Kim. Good afternoon, supervisor, members of board. Thanks for having me today. I'm excited to talk about this, this project. We've been working on it for a while with Kim's group. Go ahead to the next slide. So just a quick overview, as Kim mentioned, this project is a result of the Lake Montauk Watershed Management Plan. The watershed for the lake is fairly, fairly large, over 2,700 acres with 14 subwatersheds. Around the perimeter of the lake, there has historically been the removal of vegetated buffers. And our goal as part of this, this project is to eliminate some of the direct runoff that has been going directly into the lake. The site itself, it's right off of West, Westlake Drive. As, as its current condition, it's a fairly large parking area, over 11,000 square, square feet, mostly asphalt with some compacted dirt around the sides. There's really limited vegetation on the site now. Part of our goals of this project are to remove any invasive species that are on the site, replant with native vegetation. We're going to replace the deteriorated asphalt parking area. We're going to eliminate and the direct stormwater runoff that currently goes into the lake right down the boat, boat ramp. And overall, try to beautify the site, replace the chain link fence that's falling apart, things like that. I have two, two photos here. As you can see, mostly asphalt, compacted dirt, very limited vegetation. You can see by how, how gray my photos are. So where, where we are to date, we started this project by doing our, our initial site investigations, doing our topographic and utility surveys, our soil moorings, doing our infiltration tests. Once we had all that done, we moved on to the design process, did our analysis of the results of those tests, performed our stormwater cals, and now we've been developing 30, 60, 90% plans, mainly in coordination with the Environmental Resources Group. Where we are to date, we submitted to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation for Permits at the end of February. We're waiting to hear back from them still, so we should be hearing back very, very soon at this point. And our goal today is to get the feedback from the town, town board prior to finalizing the design. I'll explain this in more detail, not expecting everybody to read the, the engineering plans. But essentially, let's see if my pointer, it does work on the screen, great. The center asphalt strip is going to be replaced, and it's going to be constructed such that it's pitched away towards the sides of the site. On either side of the asphalt, on both the north and south side, we're going to be installing a permeable system in order to infiltrate the runoff. And anything that is not infiltrated in, into that system, we'll be constructing a bio-retention area. This just died on me. We'll be constructing bio-retention areas on both the north side of the site and on the south side of the site. And as I mentioned, the chain link fence along the south side of the site is going to be completely replaced. All along the bio-retention areas will have a split rail fence installed. On my next slide, I have a couple of pictures too, just to highlight it a little bit better. So we have three bio-retention areas total. One when you first come in, two on either side of the site closer towards the boat, boat ramp. The boat ramp is not getting replaced as part of the project. There was a prior town study several years ago that determined that it was in good condition. It's actually one of the better boat ramps that the town has. All throughout these bio-retention areas, we'll be using, as I mentioned, native vegetation. This paver system, essentially, if I could describe it, it's like, it's a recycled HDPE cell, like a grid of cells that is filled with either stone, rock, you can do broken shells. So there's voids in there that allow the stormwater to infiltrate in, into the soil. Next slide. We have a fairly robust landscaping plan. Not going to go into the details of it here, but we have a, a very mix of perennial grasses, shrubs, and trees. Our goal here is really to have a high density to ensure the likelihood of the establishment of, of these plants and to eliminate the ability of invasive species to creep in. Go ahead to the next slide. We know that the maintenance is always a large concern for the towns that we work with. As part of the construction documents, we are proposing to include a bid item to perform maintenance of these bio-retention areas for a five-year period. We're estimating that the bio-retention areas need about a three-year period to become fully established and strong. So by the time the town takes it over after year five, they should already be well established at that point. And as I, as I mentioned, the goal is really to have a high, high density of the plantings because that really helps ensure that you don't have the invasive species coming in. So after that five-year period, what we would expect is annually to have to go in there, remove any trash or garbage that accumulates in there, and biannually check for invasive species that may have to be removed.
Can I just ask?
Yes.
On the asphalt part, what's the, the lifespan of, of that?
The asphalt will last minimum 10 to 15 years, just like your typical road, you know, before you might see some cracking or things like that.
Just, we're on questions. Just with this operation right now, like two of the key features are, one, the ability for boats with trailers to be able to turn around, so they don't have to back into the facility. Have we got that turning space kind of built into here?
Yep.
And then the other piece is just, you know, as people go out on their boats, they need somewhere to place the trailers, you know? Is that a designated area in this plan as well?
Yeah, so we're actually not reducing the areas that are currently there, there now. But we did check, it is adequate. And we're not proposing to reduce any of the parking space. We're actually removing some of the invasive species, and that's where we'll be building our bio-retention areas. So we're not reducing any of the current parking area now.
And again, you just, you mentioned in kind of the pre-work, the topographic, the utility survey, the boring, the percolation tests. What were the results? Do we, again, do we have existing water quality results we can kind of measure pre and post this?
So we have good, good soils here. We have groundwater depth of around five, five feet. In terms of measuring the, the results, we'd have to speak about Lake Montauk water quality, you know, whatever water quality analytical data you have now, we could compare before and after. I'm not sure exactly what's right near this boat, boat ramp, but we could look.
Kim, do you happen to know, sorry, Kim? Do you happen to know if we have water quality data for this area that we're, the ramps going into or no?
In the general area.
The whole lake is?
Not specifically out of the boat ramp, but this is stormwater renovation.
Right, yeah. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just have a question. Tom, are you finished?
Yeah, thank you, Kim.
I have a question on the installation of the chain link fence down the southern side of the property. Does that go all the way to the water?
Yeah, so we're stopping wherever the existing chain link fence stops now, which it does, it is very close to the, to the water there. You can kind of see it on the, on the slide there where the black line stops, but.
Yeah. Why chain link down to there?
That's what's existing now, so.
And, and do you have the height of what that would be? Six foot?
That is something that can be changed, that, you know, we could put the perma head slats in it, things like that, but.
That's a great, it's a great looking project, guys. I think it's, I, I know this area means a lot to a lot of, lot of local Montauk people and, you know, they, they keep a close eye on it. So to see this improvement, I think will be a win for the town.
Just on the chain link fence, one more second. I just know like by anywhere where we have chain link fences, like I know Suffolk County makes them, like Cedar Point Park, the whole thing had to be chain linked. And it just rusts and, you know, it, it gets impacted by the salt, air and the salt water. So it looks awful, and I don't think it's effective. And at some point, you got the rust leaching now. So I'm, I'm a little concerned about the chain link.
So we could propose to coat it in a PPC vinyl coating that, you know, that we can make it black, that, that will increase the lifespan. That is an option too.
Maybe we could look.
Or we can do something completely different.
Environmental, more environmentally friendly, maybe?
Yep.
Some kind of fencing? If you could just look into that, that would be great. Thanks.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm supportive as well. I had the same questions as Tom about turning radiuses, but it sounds like you are on top of that, and it looks like a great project.
David, did you have comments?
I, I do, thank you. Thank you, Tom, for coming in. One department we also checked with in advance for this project was also the highway department, knowing that the highway department maintains occurring snow events and such. We wanted to make sure that any of the true grid or the asphalt would be able to be maintained for those factors. Another factor of using asphalt, traditional asphalt on the location down the middle was there is a lot of torque that is needed by individuals that are using or pulling their boats out or putting their boats in. The torque needs to have enough catch on their wheels to be able to pull their boats out. So any type of gravel in those locations, which, yes, might be more permeable, would affect the user groups and the way that they can use the spot. The amount of flow that comes down Derriere Ave probably comes almost all the way from Collodin, the Collodin Preserve down there, and it rushes through there. So that bioswell that is at the top there will need to be maintained. I'm wondering if we even maybe want to put a, a split rail fence on there also. Overall, I know we've worked with the Marine Patrol and making sure that individuals that use as a boat slip, how they traditionally use it as a turnaround, or they back their boats in, pull their boats off, as Tom had mentioned, the trailers leaving and come back. There's enough of a radius for that. The property to the south, I believe, is in full site plan right now. And the properties to the north were purchased by the town maybe 15 years ago from the Bistrion families. And there also is a security camera there, there too. I did bring this to the Montauk CAC last night for discussion. They're all very happy, as Tom had mentioned. This is a location that's very highly visible. I did have one, one response this morning about a couple of the vegetation might be better to work in a saltwater environment, and I'll send that to Tom and, Tom and the committee. But overall, the CACs was very supportive of this project for the multiple reasons of trying to, you know, clean the water and not have stormwater rush into the cove. For that, I'm very appreciative of the time and effort the town staff has put in. Thank you.
Thank you, David. All right. Well, I concur with my colleagues, and so it looks like this is moving forward, and we appreciate the timeline you put in so we have a better understanding of.
Great, thank you.
And the community has a better understanding of what to expect.
That's it, thank you. Yeah, the goal is not to disrupt, obviously, the voting season. Thank you, thank you very much.
Otherwise, our votes will bring off the hook. Thank you, Tom. Okay. So lastly, we have the proposed amendment to Chapter 255 zoning definition of community resource, and Rob is stepping up to the podium. Welcome, Rob.
Good afternoon. So as you all are aware, the zoning code created zoning districts and uses that are either permitted, not permitted, or permitted by special permit in those districts. One use that is conspicuously missing from, from the zoning district are municipal uses. So it's being proposed that a definition be added to Chapter 255-120 definitions for a community resource. A community resource would be defined as a specific town-owned building, facility, infrastructure system, or geographic area of special economic development, environmental, scenic, cultural, historic, recreational, parkland, open space, natural resource, or other unique significance located wholly or partially within the boundaries of the town of East Hampton. It's also being proposed that community resources be exempt from zoning, which is not a novel concept. There are a number of municipalities throughout the state that have exempted themselves from their own zone. There are a number of municipalities throughout the state that have exempted themselves from their own zoning codes. And the reason for this is that the exemption would allow for the swift development and implementation of town-owned projects or facilities that serve critical community needs, whether they are recreational, cultural, environmental, or related to other areas of public interest. And it's also important to remember that as town board members, you're fiduciaries to the community. So to prevent economic waste, these projects need to be moved along at a rapid pace so that they can be implemented.
I, I would just jump in and also add for some of these projects, like a dune restoration project, it's also critical for it to move along rapidly to prevent damage.
Exactly.
Further damage or water inundation in neighborhoods for those types of projects.
Right. And it's also important to recognize that even if the town board does exempt the town from, from its own zoning court, the town will still be in consultation with the planning department, who is the department that consults with the planning board, architectural review board, the zoning board. The town is still going to have to comply with SECR and other pertinent regulations. Those from the Army Corps of Engineers, the New York State DEC, and Suffolk County Department of Health Services. And you also have to obtain billing departments and CFOs from, from the town's billing department. The town board will still be able to consult with the town attorney's office, the planning department, Department of Natural Resources, and could seek guidance from its appointed boards, ensuring that while the town board has final authority, other experts will still be involved in planning and oversight. This would help ensure that resources are developed thoughtfully and appropriately with consideration of applicable rules and regulations, good planning principles, environmental protection, sustainability, and community character, while maintaining the board's control over the project's execution. I've also identified the sections of the code that would need to be amended in order to, to exempt the town from its zoning code. First would be we would add that definition of community resource to section 255, 120 in the definitions. And then in section 255, 260 residential districts, this pertains to clearing. We would, the town board would have to change 255, 260A to include language that if the town board deemed a project as a community resource, it would be exempt from those provisions. And that's similarly what would happen in the Protection of Natural Resources section, which is 255, 420. Special permit uses section, which is 255-520. The other heightened clearing restrictions that are found in section 255, 554, as well as the site plan section of the code, which is 255, 635D. It would also, I would recommend that the table of dimensional regulations and uses be included to, to include community resource as a, as a use.
So Rob, would this potentially be allowed to apply to other municipalities that don't fall under the town's remit? Fire district buildings, et cetera, like along those lines?
No, this is specifically for town-owned buildings. Those projects would, if they were looking to exempt themselves from zoning, would still have to come to the town board and they could, they could either go through the process or they could ask the town to allow for the Monroe balancing test.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think from, from my perspective, this is kind of a move of operational efficiency. I, I think that while I understand that there may be, and there's a need for public discussion on this with regards to, you know, people having concerns that this allows the town to bypass boards. I, I don't think that's actually the case, given that the way the boards function, it's not just site visits, it's also the planning memos that they receive, which would be the same ones we would receive as, as we were kind of moving forward on projects here. You know, I think if you look at existing town buildings, there's some issues that we need to address and this will help us do that as, as we move forward. I think it's just really, this is, this is what we need to operate as government, so.
Um, yeah, I'm in support of this for a number of reasons. Specifically, I think this allows us a more efficient and a more considerate look at where we place town assets. We wouldn't be restricted to only say commercial areas for commercial things or a, a community resource that the whole entire town will use. So I think ma- making it, ensuring that we can provide common accessibility to everywhere, everyone in town is one of the reasons why we would also need this. If we were only restricted to certain zones, but then we're restricting access to our public facilities, our community resources. So I think in terms of it being accessible to all, any, any project being accessible to all community members, that's an important part of that, this as well. I also think that being on the zoning board for 10 years, I think we were under, we were operating under the, under the opinion that we were exempt. I certainly can't remember many town projects coming in front of the zoning board in all those years. So I think this is codifying a policy that the town has been operating under and other municipalities as well for quite some time.
A lot of municipalities operate under that.
And my guardrails, because you know, those are always important for me, particularly with zoning, the guardrails are, is, are that we need to comply, particularly with SECR. It doesn't exempt us from SECR, which is a very important guardrail for me. And also from any other Board of Health or other regulatory, we would still go before the Suffolk County Planning Commission. If we needed DEC permits, we would still get those and those are very extensive processes for those who have gone through DEC permit on anything they need for a natural resource. So I think the guardrails of the other regulations satisfy our need for making sure there's guardrails and things don't get out of control.
Yeah, I agree with, with the previous board members' comments. I mean, look, this is a tricky thing. Obviously, we want to, you know, comply with, with our own rules and I look forward to a public hearing if it goes that far on this. But I do think, as, as Rob pointed out, it's, you know, fiscally responsible to not waste resources and we have limited resources. Our planning department works very hard supporting the appointed boards. And for the town board to have to go through that process in addition to already having the feedback from the planning department, who is guiding those other boards, I, I think is unnecessary and can be wasteful. I think we'll have to be careful and cognizant of how we use this and make sure that we, you know, apply all the safeguards. I think Kate's concern about guardrails are certainly concerns that I share. But I do think, and, and look, Kate just said it, we've been operating this way historically, as many other towns do, because the assumption was that we didn't have to go through the regular process that the public does. Just a couple of examples of situations where I think this is necessary. A natural resources special permit for clearing Frag Mighty. When we may already have a DEC permit, we may already have a trustee permit, we already have natural resources and planning signing off on that. Is it really wise for us to then go before the ZBA, who has a long backlog of applications, that we want to usher along for the, the public's applications that are before? And so I think that that would be wasteful and we don't have a mechanism currently to, to, I don't want to say bypass that, but I think go through in a more reasonable, efficient process without any sort of, I think, sacrifice and protections. Another example I think would be CPF properties. You know, we have requirements for parking and various things. CPF properties are often licensed out with, with great care and way more restrictions than our code has by itself. And for those projects to then have to go before ARB, planning and zoning board, I think would be wasteful and may lead to outcomes that, that we don't actually want. So I think this is crucial. I do think, again, we have to think about safeguards and so I think the public hearing will welcome all comments there to make sure that we're sort of threading the needle in the right way, but I, I think this is necessary and I'm supportive.
Great, thank you. David? Did we lose David?
He's still on the line. I'm not sure if he can hear you.
Maybe he's in a no cell area.
The only, the only other thing I want, I guess I want to say one more thing. Just to be super clear is that I have got a great deal, as Kate mentioned, she was on the zoning board for a long time. I know Dave was as well. I was on the planning board for 12 years. I've got a great deal of respect for those boards and I don't think this should be viewed as us trying to limit their authority or power. It's just a matter of a situation where this board is already using their same resources, it's redundant. And so it, it is, I think, in no way a reflection of, you know, concern of how they do their business, which is independent of ours. It's just, this is a different situation.
Yeah, and I agree with my, my colleagues. You know, we are in fact codifying a past practice. You know, I've served on the town board almost 12 years and when we've done, oh, there he is. That's why you dropped off. When we've done town projects, we have been working hand in hand with the planning department. They're typically in, you know, at the ground level and are partners throughout the process, as is natural resources, the building department when necessary. So we are getting their expert, their expertise. We're bringing in outside consultants when need be and we have the ability to do that because we can by resolution, you know, hire outside consultants to do studies or testing for us. So I, I would look forward to putting this on for a, a public hearing. And we're just talking.
No additional comments.
Okay. All right, so are board members comfortable with us noticing this for public hearing?
Yeah.
On the 17th?
Okay.
Hearing it, I guess, in whatever that Thursday, first Thursday in May is.
Again, thanks, Rob, for putting this together. I think it's a really important piece.
All right, great. All right, so we're through our topics and we are up to the liaison portion of our program. Tom?
Right, Amagansett Citizens Advisory Committee just want to remind members that our meeting this month is on April 21st, not next week, as the school is closed for the Easter vacations. So April 23rd, 6:30 PM at the Amagansett School Library. IT, we continue with our soft launch of Open Gov. This meet, this month, we've got a meeting set up with our special events coordinators to begin to get that department in the process as well. Human Services, the Seamen Nutrition Program will be having its Easter and Passover luncheon this Friday, April 11th, beginning at 11:00 AM. Celebration will begin with a live jazz performance by Lewis Brigham. Also have to announce that Lewis will be playing at the center monthly. The meal for the holiday celebration will be lamb with gravy. Apparently that is a client favorite. There is additionally a drawing and painting class Tuesday, April 8th, led by Kate Goldman at 2:00 PM. She will also be there April 29th for a second class. Arts and crafts has been generally moved to Fridays at 1:00 PM. And also a reminder, we've added a third zumba class on Wednesdays at 2:00 PM. The additional times on Monday and Friday at 10:00 PM for that. Sanitation, just another reminder for people that permits are due. One thing that I have had feedback from some Montauk residents on is the challenge of getting permits, just with people working during the day. You know, they can only get to the clerk's office on a Saturday. So the only option for them on the weekends is to go up to East Hampton, to the Springs Fireplace facility. Just kind of want to put to consideration for next year, the possibility of actually during the March, even Feb, March months of having someone in the clerk's office on Saturday to allow people to go in and get their permits there.
You mean in East Hampton?
In, in Montauk.
Oh, in Montauk. So just so you know, past practice prior to COVID, the town clerk's office in East Hampton was open March, April, May and June on Saturday mornings from 9:00 to 12:00. So folks who were working or were only out here on the weekends had the ability to do that. So I mean, that may be something we want to look at.
Revisit.
Yeah.
They can do it through the mail too.
Perfect, thank you. Just a quick follow-up, we're continuing ADU implementation, the work session last week. One of the questions was kind of about lot, lot size of existing applications, so, and existing ADUs. We're going to have more data at a future work session, but just kind of heads up, some of the initial data. Of the 43 ADUs we have in town right now, 12 or 20% are on lots less than 2,000 square feet, sorry, 20,000 square feet, and four of the 43 are on lots less than 15,000 square feet. There will be an ADU committee meeting this Thursday at 11:00 AM by Zoom as well. Brooks Park, so as I mentioned in the last work session, the Brooks Park Board themselves have returned their proposal for licensed fossil operations. You know, I've, I've been talking with the land management department about this and just wanted to share this with my colleagues to get your feedback too. But there's kind of a relatively new leadership group within this group as well. And, you know, from the perspective of land management, there's consideration as to, should we potentially start this process over, you know, you know, a revised management plan? You know, one that the new committee board and the town can help shape. You know, and actually to do this instead via the property management committee, you know, and just to roll it into that. So, you know, I kind of wanted just to put that out to you as to whether you think that would be a suitable way to kind of redo this management plan. I know following our last meeting, you know, it was just felt that the existing management plan doesn't really apply to operations enough. So perhaps it's time to kind of redo a management plan for this property with the insight and guidance of the property management committee.
Yeah, I'm certainly open to that for sure. I mean, I respect what, you know, what you've done with, with your group and so we should coordinate about how this, how this proceeds. But I, I agree that the management plan should match what, you know, ultimately is going to be proposed there.
Great, thank you. License review board, current reviewing, you know, we've got the list of the 70,000 contractor licenses we have in here. Just also, as, as we kind of go forward and kind of revisit how we might be able to improve this process, if any members of the public have feedback on experiences they've had that they'd like to share, that potentially, you know, the, the LRB could look at reviewing, I'm, I'm open to taking those considerations on. So feel free to reach out to me by email on that one. Public safety, so we, we've circulated to relevant departments in the town, the emergency plan review questions. They're currently sitting with East Hampton Town PD and the emergency coordinator for some additional follow-up. We've also requested from the emergency coordinator a tabletop scenario for the committee, just to review through what some potential operations might look like and where we might have areas we wish to address. Anti-bias Task Force, we have a meeting this Friday. We're going to be fortunate to have Brooke Leaven from East Hampton High School at that meeting, who will be discussing anti-bias training. Arts Council, again, just a reminder that on June 12th, there will be a panel discussion at LTV just to discuss the arts in the town of East Hampton and what we can do to better support them. Emergency preparedness, meeting is next month. Tick Control, just a reminder for people with, continue, any questions you have regarding tick life cycle, any kind of myths you wish to address with regards to tick-borne illnesses, please feel free to email the town at tickquestions@easthamptonny.gov. And then lastly, YMCA, we have a board meeting scheduled for April 23rd. That's it.
Thank you, Tom. David?
Thank you very much. Short and brief, I didn't know if it was going to be here. I want to thank the supervisor and the board members for allowing me to participate remotely. I don't know if you mentioned where I was.
Yes.
Okay, I want to thank presiding officer McCaffrey at the county legislature for allowing me to speak first on behalf of the town to try to, to try to advocate for the transfer of 72 each properties to the town of East Hampton for affordable housing. I also want to thank legislature and, and Welker for welcoming me there too. And hopefully that, that works out. The Montauk CAC did meet last night, then too. We had the presentation on the Westlake, on the Westlake Boat Ramp. The same presentation that we had here today, a couple of comments and follows up, followed up. I just saw Tom outside. I'll, I'll send those to him. Also, the part of the Montauk CAC was a discussion on the New York State project to, to move and replace some of the historic guardrails that they had. Some of them are jarring to individuals or in more locations. They'll be following up with the county assemblymen and senators if needed be. Part of that also came into a discussion, there was a longer discussion, meaning it's a long-lasting discussion. Multiple years ago, they requested a decrease in the speed limit on Montauk Highway from the, pretty much from the library or Essex Street up to, up to the ranch on there, a decrease. It seems like there's some confusion with the signs and the speed limit on the signs. I'm, I'm not fully aware of that, so I'll take a ride out there later today. But they, they passed a motion unanimously to request the reduction in speed limits from the area of Essex up to the ranch to where the state park begins in those locations. Could follow through with that. I did a walk through the Second House Restoration Project. It has been deemed substantially complete. There's a small little bucket list. I actually just saw some people working over there today. We look forward to working with the Montauk Historical Society now in the next couple of weeks to be able to transfer over the keys so that they can plan upcoming events and start to educate individuals and residents and travelers to the area. But many different things, Montauk and House, Second House played a pivotal role in the history of East Hampton and in Montauk specifically then too. I believe we can maybe even have that as our ribbon cutting next month, Madam Supervisor. Maybe we can schedule that then too. I want to thank the board's support and the community's support and the Montauk Historical Society's support because it's been, they said 11 years. I know I've been. I know I've been working on it for about seven and a half years then, too. You learn things from every project you do. Definitely learned a bunch from this one. But overall, it's, it's working with Bob Hefner and Drew Bennett. It's a very appropriate restoration of Second House right now. We all should be very proud. Paving and drainage, you're seeing bee hive activity downtown Montauk today. They started milling last week, as I mentioned, and they're paving now and waiting for asphalt to roll in. Let's not forget asphalt costs more money at a Montauk when you pass Net Peak Harbor Road. I think it's almost another $20 a ton. And they like to get that out of the way first, being the contractors paved Montauk under, to pretend the highway is lynch, they're mostly paving downtown Montauk. Potentially by the end of this round in the spring, most of downtown Montauk will be repaved. Then we'll stripe it also then, too. And we've been working on ADA accessibility ramps and that over the last couple of years then, too. So please have a little patience out there in Montauk. And the rest of the drain, some drainage happening on Westlake and also Old Montauk Highway is ongoing. And then paving will happen in other areas of township. So please, please be patient and be careful of our, the workers that are out there. The multi-use field installation is well underway at the Honorable Fred Thiel Park at Stephen Hand's Path. They're finishing some of the dozing work this week and they're going to be installing some of the base layers there for filtration. I did have one request of them, I was actually at my daughter's varsity softball game in Belleport. And at the Martha Clara, I don't know if you've ever been to Martha Clara, it's a big recreation facility there. They keep building up on, in Belleport and Brookhaven, some coloring of, of, of the turf field to give some better depth perception to, for Little Leaguers or softball players. I discussed this with, actually, East Hampton Little League and they liked that idea. So there might be some small changes, but overall, that project is moving full steam ahead. And that runs into East Hampton Little League Opening Day. They're using the park, they're using many of the parks. Little League is working collaboratively with the town of East Hampton, preparing all the fields. I believe Maidstone is on the docket for this week. We got a little delayed by the weather, the rain. But overall, a lot of individuals are very excited for that multi-user field over there, too, in the future. Also then, too, including Joe McKee, who's the head football coach at the high school. Upcoming is the Montauk Chamber Converse Preseason Meeting that will be coming up. I did discuss with the Montauk CAC, Kate, where we are with the Montauk Sustainability Planning and the drafts of the RFP then, too, also. So just making sure everyone's aware that's still moving, moving ahead and where we're at in the process, too. I also did mention dump stickers, too. The big stuff got out of the way. One of the last things that was discussed there was what we mentioned in the police report from last, last week. It's that within the police report, in the hiring of additional staff members in Marine Patrol, they went over some of the numbers with non-compliant beach fires and also no beach driving permits. Some of those quality of life citations that were handed out that it had an increase when we saw it in 2024, they were very appreciative of that, then, too, the Montauk CAC. That's what I have and I'll do more and even better next week. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Kate?
Yes, I don't have a long liaison report this week, but I'll start with Wayne Scott CAC. They met via Zoom, as they do every other month, on the first Saturday of the month. They were very accommodating to allow the meeting to start at 8:30 instead of 9:00 AM to be able to go to events, which I'm sure you'll talk about later on. We did go over, first of all, you know, they continue to express great concern over the gun club and the airport. I think there's, I can, I don't think there is frustration in the lack of information that we're able to convey to them due to the litigation in both, in both areas. And I appreciate that frustration. The, we had come before the board with traffic recommendations for some stop signs on Wayne Scott Stone Road and Wayne Scott Main Street. And we had a presentation to the board and, and some of the public commented on the stop signs. However, there were a couple of stop signs that were in the recommendation that seemed to have board support and there were no comments from the, from the public. So that would be the intersections of Wayne Scott Stone Road and Sayers Path and the intersection of Wayne Scott Stone Road and Wayne Scott Northwest Road. That's two stop signs. I was wondering if the board would like us to come back with any more information on those stop signs or if they, you would support a public hearing on those two stop signs based on the last presentation? So I said I would pull you guys on how you feel about that.
There is, I'm sorry, Wayne Scott Stone Road and Sayers Path, what was the second one?
Wayne Scott Stone Road and Wayne Scott Northwest. Those were the two more northernly that didn't, didn't interact with the farm fields. And then I had another, so that's one recommendation that we already presented to, to this board and to the public.
So why don't you bring those maps back to your liaison report next week? And then if everybody's, those are good, those could go to public hearing.
Great. Outside of that, there is one more that a resident has recently brought forward to me regarding like Crossways and Westgate. So don't write about this in the papers, but there is, you know, there is a generally understood route and promoted route to be able to get back to the traffic light by the, by the post office and get to a left turn that goes through a very narrow streets. They're very narrow streets, a couple of streets in that neighborhood behind the office buildings. Now everyone's going to know it anyway, whether you write about it or not. I mean, there is a neighbor that lives there that says now the, the speeding that goes on there and the congestion of traffic, the congestion is even more concerning to him with also now the addition of heavy, heavy construction trucks that are going in and out of the industrial area over there that's been revived for business. So he is asking separately, this hasn't gone in front of the traffic recommendation group, but I don't know if anybody's ever drove those roads. They're super narrow with no shoulders, they're residential neighborhoods, there's kids playing out there. They're asking for, he's asking, and his, on behalf of his neighbors for another stop sign. If I may, if I could just bring that map with me next week as well for the board and the public to consider, that would be great.
Kate, I'm going to, there should also be a location for, knowing that a lot of individuals are trying to get into the industrial park in those areas and what's your town owned? Might be a good location for weight limits, too.
That's what I was thinking, too. So are you, are you thinking about Cowhill Lake? Is that, is it Cowhill?
It's Crossways, I think. It's near Cowhill. It's through that Z that everybody makes.
Right. Which the, the doctor's offices hand you a slip of paper.
All the offices do.
Because they're, you know, they're concerned about the left-hand turn from Westgate.
It's pretty impossible to make that left-hand turn. So most, you know, the majority of folks will take advantage of that cut through. But now with the addition of the heavy construction vehicles as well, these, this impacts our ability to maintain those roads with those weights. And I was going to, you beat me to the weight limit presentation. But I just want to, if we can move with those other stop signs, since they've already been presented, I think this is as important, but they're two separate requests. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that. Also, and of course, traffic is always an issue at the Wayne Scott CAC. I did also go through the police report and the numbers, in the police report with everyone that was presented to us. I also went through some of the other reports that we had for our natural resources department, our planning department, land use departments that were presented up on the board. And I always get the same comments back that folks are just amazed at how much our departments process through the year. So I think that they were happy to see, the folks, the feedback I'm getting is that folks are happy to see those numbers for a better understanding of what our town departments do. The next item is the Wayne Scott Hamlet Study Implementation Plan that we had discussed. We had a presentation on that and talked about the commercial strip on Montauk Highway, the commercial development area where the stores are in Wayne Scott. And there's some recommendations in that plan for creating a more walkable area with sidewalks, some trees. There's recommendations for removing the lines, the bury, perhaps burying the lines, looking for grant money, looking at the use of South Forkwind Community Benefits money. There is $5.5 million set aside specifically for Wayne Scott as they had the cable going through their, their hamlet and through their neighborhoods. They, I, I'm trying to think of the first step in doing this and looking back at that presentation. I think what I would recommend and seek board approval on is looking at doing surveying work in that area because there's a lot of confusion on what's private property, what's state property, where the road right of ways are, where the lanes are. And I can't see moving any of this project forward until we know what the area looks like in terms of what's private, what's public, what's state, what's town. So my recommendation is commissioning a survey first to, to begin to look at what's possible there for implementation. And I, David, you went to the Sustain, the Resiliency Grant Meeting on Friday. I thank you for your time going there. I was unable to attend this week. I was at Stony Brook University for a Students for Climate Action Conference. There were over 300 students. It was a great group of, of young people that are interested in how they can participate in their versions of community service, whether it be organizing local pickups. We heard a million ideas from the young people of what they consider all part of reducing our footprint and being more sustainable. And I did, Ed Romayne was the lead speaker on the panel that I sat on. And I did see State Senator Monica Martinez and she, Martinez, and she says warm wishes and hello back to you, David. So I want to make sure that you.
She's a great help on the state park.
That you knew that I did. She was an excellent speaker, too, on, on getting involved for young people on the state level. Usually it just takes young people understanding how government works. I guess civics isn't really taught in the schools anymore. And once they understand that their voice matters, then they are happy to get involved in, in positive constructive ways with their own governments that influence their own future. And I think I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Kate. Ian?
Okay, the Old Stone Bridge in Culver near School Street by the, the Heart of Springs, the Springs Triangle there is scheduled for road, for replacement starting April 14th. I mentioned this last week, this is during a school break. It may be closed for up to two weeks. We're hoping it goes quicker than that, but just anybody listening, I've notified the school, the food pantry that operates out of there, everybody that I can think of. But anybody listening who uses that area, please spread the word that that bridge will be closed starting next week. I also want to say thank you to the food pantry. I know that there have been some lines that build up. You know, there's a lot of need out there for, for people in need of food. And they've extended their hours from 1:30 to 6:30 and that really cut back on the lines last week in anticipation of this, of closing the bridge, but also just generally trying to keep the, the roadways clear. So I appreciate that very much.
What's the closing time I missed?
April 14th.
And then what were the times?
No, well, they're, they're replacing the Culver under the bridge.
The food pantry.
They're, they're open from 1:30 to 6:30 on Wednesdays. And that, those are recently expanded hours. So the idea being that people come over a wider period of time and there's not the backup that they're having.
The wait was an hour and a half before.
Yeah.
I'm not surprised. Can I just, two comments on the, so your report? Can you look at Patrick's disinformation so we can post it on social media?
Absolutely.
And are we going to have to redirect how the food pantry queues while that work is being done? And is that, have you reached out to Chief Sarlo and Sergeant Kenny Alversa to?
I've reached out to, to all those people and they, the, the food pantry, what they reported to me is based on the wait times last week, the people coming from, you know, the other side of the Culver will have to redirect, but based on the wait times. So they can't queue because the bridge will be closed. So they'll have to go up the detour up School Street, but they don't anticipate a problem otherwise. I will highlight that point specifically with Chief Sarlo. Because normally they back up to where the bridge is and they can't be coming from that direction.
Right, they can't. So I don't know if they're going to have to come, go down Parsons Place.
Yes.
So, but I think that what, how the queue forms should be directed by PD. And we may need more TCOs out there, they may have to put some stanchions up. I, you know, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah.
That it's safe. I mean, the good news is that, you know, it's daylight the entire time that there, you know, folks are queuing.
Yep, no, I'll absolutely go into that. I'll, I'll talk that out more. The Springs Food Pantry also stations a person at the back of the line. Last week, the line was no more than four or five cars, but they have somebody in the back so that if it starts to become an issue, but I'll make sure that those people, and I, and I put everybody in touch together, you know, on the email, so they have each other's contact and as well as the, the project manager, Matt Jedlica. So yes, I will continue to follow through on this. If anybody has any questions or more concerns, please reach out.
Ian, sorry, just one, do we have an estimate how many people the pantry is serving on a weekly basis?
I have those numbers.
Yeah, I believe it's almost 400 families now.
Okay.
Yeah, their numbers just keep increasing because I am, was actually interviewed by LTV and Holly had sent me all of the information on, on it, so I can forward that email.
Thank you.
I'm sure they're not the only pantry that's increasing as well.
Okay, any other questions on that one?
No.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate the, the support and the help to get the word out on that. Property Management Committee met last Wednesday. I'd like to say thank you to the Wayne Scott Sowing Association or Society?
Sowing Society.
Society, who welcomed us to the Wayne Scott Chapel. I'd actually never been in that place that is always seems full of, of cars and people. It's a beautiful facility. They welcomed us for, for a space because we wanted to visit 66 Main Street Wayne Scott, which is the recently acquired CPF property, the old Osborne Farm. There were some members of the public as well as the committee. We took a tour and wow, it's, not only is that property as beautiful as everybody knows, but those, those historic buildings are really something as well. And so the committee is going to get to work on a management plan there. I think this board has a lot of considering to do of, of how those beautiful buildings get used in the best way possible. We also, I think finalized or came close to a final version, a version that's ready for this board, anyway, the Dodge Property Management Plan, which warning, I think it's going to be known as the Dodge Parsons Homestead, which sounds weird to everybody because there's such a rich history there that it's not just Dodge. But I'd like to bring that to this, this board very, very soon and then hopefully adopt a management plan that we all accept and get a licensee in there to, to get that property working.
So that's on for Tuesday, the 15th.
Oh, great, great. Perfect, way ahead of me, Kathy, as, as usual.
I tried, I tried.
Ag Advisory is scheduled to meet this Thursday at 5:00 PM. This will be at Panago Place. There's a new conference room that the town uses. It's 111A Panago Place is the building where the planning department operates out of the building department, tax, receivables, tax, tax assessors. So you guys have probably been there. Conference Room 111A will be available to us for sort of a permanent home. We've been bouncing around a little bit and in the interest of making sure people know when and where we meet, I wanted to have a consistent place. I do want to have one caveat there. I, I know that there's been some, some wet weather out there and a lot, and it looks like Thursday might be a very dry day where farmers can get things done before more rain on Friday. There is a chance that that meeting gets canceled just because 5:00 PM is a fairly early end for a lot of those farmers, considering there's a couple more hours of daylight. Any member of the public who is interested in attending that meeting, please reach out to my office and I will make sure to notify you if there's any changes. So if you just leave your phone number or email with, with me or with Chelsea, I'll make sure to reach out on Thursday if there's any changes. But right now, next, this Thursday at 5:00 PM, Panago Place, 111A. Springs CAC meets next Tuesday at 6:00 PM at Ashwag Hall. That was another play, another committee that I'm really happy to have a more permanent home. Ashwag Hall will be the location for 90% of our meetings. There might be one or two that will have a conflict later on. But we don't have an agenda yet, but anybody interested in all things Springs, please stop by. Those are very pleasant and informative meetings. And lastly, I wanted to talk about Springs Park. I know a, a couple of commenters called in earlier with good comments, always welcomed. I was actually speaking with Scott Wilson about this yesterday. I don't remember the name, but there's a local sort of bird expert who noted two new bluebirds there, which are sort of a species we're really trying to encourage. So that's some positive news. Also, I think anybody, the Springs Park Preservation Committee, who I'm not familiar, it's a new committee, I think. I don't know the membership exactly, but they submitted some comments to us with a proposed revegetation and even noted in that was, was what a problem the autumn olives were. It was noted that it's a near monoculture of, of autumn olives, which really do need to be cleared. And so I think that it was the right thing to do to clear those. I do share the concerns of that property has been so disturbed that it was, was mostly invasives, that there's such a seed bank in the way that, that autumn olives grow up from the ground. There's a concern with, with whether, you know, native. There's a concern with, with whether, you know, native habitat will naturally repopulate. There's also a concern with us being able to mow and keep those autumn olives from growing back. Uh, I spoke with Scott Wilson about this. Uh, I do think it might be worth looking at updating that management plan. Um, I don't think it's likely that we do anything this spring. As many people know and involved with this park, there's been a real emphasis on sort of, um, public discussion, so in light of that, I wouldn't want to move super quickly without having, I'm not sure who's on this committee. Um, I would welcome, um, you know, I'd participate or, or, you know, give you any information that you have so that I'm aware of, of discussions going on on that level. Um, also, there were, the proposal that was sent to us, um, was many thousands of dollars and we would have to go through a bidding process. So just so everybody knows, it's not as simple as us just saying, hey, yeah, we're gonna spend $20,000 to do that plan. Although, all of that said, I, I very much welcome the constructive feedback and the idea of sort of re-vegetating a more forested, um, area as opposed to native grasslands with concerns of what will naturally come back. So I, I definitely want to pursue that. Uh, I do think it makes sense, after talking to Scott, to watch what Russian olives, or I'm sorry, autumn olives grow back, um, so that we don't place any potential new plantings in an area that was right on top of something that was cut down and then will be choked out. So this conversation to be continued. I would anticipate that the appropriate time to, to look into that would be this fall. Um, and I, and I don't think that there's gonna be, um, I don't think that would be too late. So just, you know, fellow board members, I hope to have further conversations. Springs Park Preservation Committee and the callers, uh, I welcome, um, you know, if you're talking more about this, I certainly, um, would be happy to participate. Uh, and that is the end of my laser report.
Great, thank you, Ian. So I'd like to take a moment to update the public on some recent personnel matters. Marty Colleton began yesterday as the town's new Director of Code Enforcement. Uh, Marty brings meaningful investigative experience from both Southampton Town and Suffolk County, and we're pleased to welcome him to East Hampton. His background in public safety and code enforcement will serve our community well. We also anticipate appointing Eric Shans as Principal Planner Two in the Planning Department effective April 21st. Eric has dedicated much of his professional life to East Hampton, including many years in the Planning Department and more recently as our Director of Housing and Community Development. While he now lives outside of town, he knows this community well. We're glad to welcome him back. His experience and steady approach to land use planning will be a valuable asset to this department. After accepting the town's counter offer on Friday to continue in his role, Joe Palermo informed us this morning at 10:00 AM of his decision to move forward with his resignation as Chief Building Inspector. A resolution confirming his continued service had been scheduled for today's Town Board agenda, but will be pulled following this update. While we're disappointed to see Joe go, we respect his decision and thank him for his many years of dedicated service to the town of East Hampton, and we wish him the very best in his next chapter. Lastly, I want to let the public know that the Town Board has called a special exec session for tomorrow, we'll have that resolution shortly, to interview candidates for the position of Town Attorney. We're committed to making thoughtful decisions that support our departments and ensure we continue delivering responsive, effective service to the people of East Hampton. I'd also like to share this time an exciting update with our community. This past Saturday, the official ribbon cutting was held for the new Stony Brook East Hampton Emergency Department at 400 Panago Place. While the facility is not yet open to the public, this marks an important milestone in an effort to bring 24/7 high-quality emergency care right here to the East End. The doors are expected to open later this spring. This 22,000 square foot state-of-the-art facility will mean that residents and visitors no longer have to fight traffic, especially during the busy summer months, to assess, to access emergency services. Once open, it will offer advanced imaging such as CAT scans and MRIs, a cardiac monitoring and resuscitation room, dedicated treatment spaces for pediatric and OB-GYN care, isolation areas, fast, fast-track services, and an onsite ambulance. With East Hampton's year-round population increasing and seasonal traffic continuing to surge, this facility is a vital addition to our community. It is one of the only a few freestanding emergency departments in New York State, and it will be the first of its kind on the East End. This project was made possible through a $10 million grant from New York State and an impressive $40 million community-driven campaign. It stands as a powerful example of what can be achieved when states, state and local support, local institutions, and community generosity come together. We extend our thanks to Stony Brook Medicine, the Southampton Hospital Association, and the many donors who helped make this much-deeded facility a reality. And in June, we are anticipating a presentation from Stony Brook Medicine regarding their plans for the South Fork. Now I want to segue to the East Hampton Segover CAC as we met last night, and there were two main topics discussed under new business. The first was the former Cheryl Dairy Farm located at 20 Springs Fireplace Road. That's the 20.5 acre farm made up of four parcels that the town, I believe we had the public hearing early in 2024, but we finally closed the end of last month for $6.9 million. I shared with the CAC that the town will be releasing a request for proposals to solicit a farmer or farmers to work this land. The town does not have a particular type of agriculture in mind. It would invite all interested farmers to participate. People had noticed that all the trucks and other paraphernalia that was spread out across the farmland has been cleaned up, and that was done prior to closing, and that the town did some mowing, which, which makes for easy access to walk the property with potential applicants. The town will be doing additional cleanup of the grounds of invasive species and the buildings, including replacing the damaged fence along Springs Fireplace in preparation of a new farmer. Uh, what did come up in our, after I presented this information to the CAC is that the CAC would like to see, and I realize it's called for in the RFP, but they would like more emphasis on community engagement on the property, such as community plots or community farming activity. Uh, somebody threw out, for example, like a strawberry festival, and they, so they'd like to see this, um, open up more to the community than other, uh, you know, properties that we have leased to farmers in the past. Uh, the other discussion that came up was soil sampling at ECO Farm. It's been almost 10 years since the town conducted soil sampling there, testing for arsenic. Um, I had recalled a presentation that was done, and that was actually in the fall of 2016. Uh, Kim Shaw has since reached out to Cornell Cooperative Extension, and her team is putting together a proposal and map for Cornell, uh, to review. So, uh, what we know is that their services are free and the town will pay for the lab costs, so, uh, that is going to be, we'll need a resolution for that as soon as, um, Kim can lock down the costs in the Town Board. I, hopefully I'll have the support of the board to authorize that soil sample testing. And that's what I have for, for today. So now we have, we have quite a few resolutions because we've got, uh, many of them are for the bonding that we had done when we adopted the 2025 capital plan.
I will kick off, uh, with 2025 525. This is a special warrant, uh, for SW Grimes. It resolved that claims on special warrant in the amount of $167,773.45 was ordered by the town and the supervisor is hereby directed to pay it the same.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
526, this is a bond Secra. Um, this is, um, the Town Board has before it for consideration on April 8th, 2025, various bond resolutions for the funding of various capital projects deemed to have no significant adverse environmental impacts that are classified as type-two actions for Secra. Uh, regulations are enacted under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, which is Secra. Be resolved that the Town Board finds the following projects departments listed as classified as type-two actions under Secra. Peach House Farm renovations, various projects in and for the town as listed, townwide building improvements, purchase of lifeguard radios, townwide HVAC upgrades, acquisition of heavy-duty vehicles and equipment, town hall building improvements, dock and pier reconstruction, planning, drainage improvements, construction of sidewalk improvements, road construction, police building improvements at the Panago Road Site, park improvements, various comfort stations upgrades, and sanitation building improvements.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
527 is a secret termination for the Abrams Path Terry King Park, um, consideration April 8th, 2025. Improvements to the Abraham Path, uh, Terry King Park consisting of constructing a new comfort station with an IA sanitary system, conversion of the existing onsite comfort station to a, um, building, to a dry storage building, and construction of pickable courts and walkways with an approximate area of .25 acres consisting of lawn and onsite driveways. Whereas proposed project is deemed as an unlisted action, uh, by Secra, and whereas the town's prepared an environmental assessment for and review criteria contained in Secra, and analyzed and identified relevant areas of environmental concern to determine if proposed, proposed action will have a significant effect on the environment. Be resolved, the Town Board hereby finds that the projects proposed will not have significant, um, as classified as an unlisted action under Secra pursuant to 6 NCRR, Part 617 and Town Code Chapter 128. And be it resolved, the Town Board hereby issues a negative declaration pursuant to Secra and Chapter 128.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's my pleasure to offer Resolution 2025 528. This is a bond for 1.7, uh, $1,725,900 for various improvements. Bond resolution of the town of East Hampton, New York, uh, authorizes this to finance various projects in and around the town, uh, stay in the maximum cost therein.
Second.
We need a roll call, Carol, for the bonds.
Councilmember Flight?
Aye.
Councilmember Leece?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Call to Pimont?
Aye.
Supervisor Burke Gonzalez?
Aye.
2025 529 is a bond for $2 million for the dock and pier, uh, reconstruction. This would be for the Westlake Dock Improvements. The PPU for this is 20 years.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Councilmember Flight?
Aye.
Councilmember Leece?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Call to Pimont?
Aye.
Supervisor Burke Gonzalez?
Aye.
530 is a bond for $1,060,000 for Town Hall and other office building improvements. The PPU on this is 15 years.
Second.
Councilmember Flight?
Aye.
Councilmember Leece?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Pimont?
Aye.
Supervisor Burke Gonzalez?
Aye.
531 is a bond for $50,000 for the acquisition of lifeguard, uh, radios, and the PPU on this is 10 years.
Second.
Councilmember Flight?
Aye.
Councilmember Leece?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Call to Pimont?
Aye.
Supervisor Burke Gonzalez?
Aye.
532 is a bond for $875,000 for acquisition of heavy-duty vehicles and equipment, and the PPU on this is, uh, PPU is a period of probable useful, useful, usefulness, is 15 years.
Second.
Councilmember Flight?
Aye.
Councilmember Leece?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Call to Pimont?
Aye.
Supervisor Burke Gonzalez?
Aye.
Uh, 533 is a bond for $100,000 towards town HVAC, HVAC improvements. PPU on this is 10 years.
Second.
Councilmember Flight?
Aye.
Councilmember Leece?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul to Pimont?
Aye.
Supervisor Burke Gonzalez?
Aye.
534 is a bond for $185,000 for townwide building improvements. The PPU is also 15 years.
Second.
Councilmember Flight?
Aye.
Councilmember Leece?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Call to Pimont?
Aye.
Supervisor Burke Gonzalez?
Aye.
535 is a bond for $1.5 million to finance construction of the Peach House Restoration, and the PPU is 10 years.
Second.
Councilmember Flight?
Aye.
Councilmember Leece?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Call to Pimont?
Aye.
Supervisor Burke Gonzalez?
Aye.
536 is a bond for $200,000 for Abraham's Path Storage Building. The PPU on this is 15 years.
Second.
Councilmember Flight?
Aye.
Councilmember Leece?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Call to Pimont?
Aye.
Supervisor Burke Gonzalez?
Aye.
537 is a bond for $100,000, construction of various comfort stations. The PPU on this is 15 years.
Second.
Councilmember Flight?
Aye.
Councilmember Leece?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Call to Pimont?
Aye.
Supervisor Burke Gonzalez?
Aye.
538 is a bond for $445,000 for park improvements. The PPU on this is also 15 years.
Second.
Councilmember Flight?
Aye.
Councilmember Leece?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Call to Pimont?
Aye.
Supervisor Burke Gonzalez?
Aye.
539 is a bond for, uh, $300,000 for drainage improvements. The PPU on this is 40 years.
Second.
Councilmember Flight?
Aye.
Councilmember Leece?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Call to Pimont?
Aye.
Supervisor Burke Gonzalez?
Aye.
And I also have, uh, Resolution 2025 540. This is a bond for $95,000 for sidewalk improvements. This is a 10-year PPU.
Second.
Councilmember Flight?
Aye.
Councilmember Leece?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Call to Pimont?
Aye.
Supervisor Burke Gonzalez?
Aye.
Uh, 541 is a bond for $550,000 for road improvements. This is a PPU of 15 years.
Second.
And then just a discussion on this, this is, this is an increase over years past because the supervisor wanted this increase, which I, I, I fullheartedly agree with. As you see, we're paving, building the roads, it's something that, uh, individuals and residents of the town of East Hampton use on a daily basis, so I commend the supervisor for doing this.
Councilmember Flight?
Aye.
Councilmember Leece?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Call to Pimont?
Aye.
Supervisor Burke Gonzalez?
Aye.
542 is a bond for $495,000 for planning of various projects. The PPU on this is 5 years. years.
Second.
Councilmember Flake?
Aye.
Councilmember Leese?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Call to Pimont?
Aye.
Supervisor Burke Gonzalez?
Aye.
2025-543 is the part-time recreational aid Nicholas Wagner, an hourly, and as a recreation aid in the recreational department, an hourly rate of $17.85 effective April 11, 2025.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm used to Carol.
Aye.
We're in the rhythm.
544 is update mooring rules and regulations, is the update, the commercial dockage rules and regulations, update recreational dockage rules and regulations as previously described and discussed.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
545 is authorized license agreement for Bluff Restoration Project, this is an Alvis Landing, this is the owners of 165 Alvis Landing, 22 Robview Road, have received the, have received the NRSP permit for the town for bluff, bluff restoration, excuse me, and they're looking to license agreement to use portions of the town's parking lot there for this project, this is.
For staging.
For staging, yes, for staging for this project, this is, has been done in the past also, in accordance to all the applicable permitting that they have.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
546 is the retained DB Bennett for Engineering Services for 185 Soundview Drive, there is, the bluff crest has been receding there, and we're making sure that the walkway and the stairway is adequate there, and we received the proposal on March 21, 2025, and the cost of engineering for assistance of this shall not exceed $1,850.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
547 is authorization of a CPF acquisition for 15 Barfield Avenue, and this is Suffolk County Tax Map 300-19-7-44.21, and the proposed purchase price is $5,922.80.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I have Resolution 2025-548, and this is for Police Department Employee Fingerprints reimbursement, and this is for six East Hampton Town Police Department employees, and they shall each be reimbursed $89.25. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
549 is a bond for $175,000 for police building improvements, and the period of probable usefulness is 10 years. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call?
I'm sorry. Roll call, sorry.
Councilmember Flake?
Aye.
Councilmember Leese?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Call to Pimont?
Aye.
Supervisor Burke Gonzalez?
Aye. Resolution 2025-550, I make a motion to withdraw this resolution. Second. All in favor?
Aye.